I'd like to call to order our Nelson City Council meeting for October the fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming out. At this time, we'd like to have a word of prayer. Father God, we thank you for today. Lord, we ask that you will be with us, that you would lead us, guide us, and direct us in the decisions that we make for citizens here in our community. Lord, we ask that you would just be with our families. We ask, Lord, that you would be with our police and our firefighters, our servicemen here in our cities, Father God, and just keep them safe, put your hedge of protection in. We thank you for today and the opportunity just to serve here. We ask and do this thing. Okay? Who wants to do the time to lead this name?
I would lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you. Set this agenda approval. Can I get approval for our agenda meeting for October the fourteenth, twenty twenty-four?
May I have your approval for the agenda?
That's it. Give me a second.
Sure.
You can take a little all danger. Yes, thank you. Approval of the minutes for September the ninth, twenty twenty-four, council meeting? If I was going to do a public appearance, I'm sorry. I was going to skip right over the hump. So we have a public appearance. Anything that, does anybody have anything for what's on the agenda? Okay. And I told you I'd give you two minutes to address the council with an issue that you would like, even though it's a civil matter, he'd like to make sure he raises awareness on the council. If you would like to come to the table, you state your name and address.
My name is Josh Cantrell. I live at ninety-eight Barrel Way, my grandpa across from me. Got a really nice neighborhood, quite. We've got some people who have moved in in one sixty-three Barrel Way, and since September the twentieth was the first time this happened. Four and five nights a week, they're riding motorcycles up and down. No reason for them to go to the cul-de-sac. They send everyone down to the cul-de-sac, turn around and go back up and pull in the driveway. When they leave, they do the same thing. They're being very nasty, shooting birds, yelling obscenities to other neighbors, Mr. Mill, myself, shooting fireworks over neighbors, over neighbors' homes at night, midnight, you know, all hours of the night. This is going on regularly, and I'm just here to ask for help. That's all we're here for, they do through my neighbors, and we're all affected by this. We just want to ask for help from the council, whatever you guys can do. Mr. Pope's children, he has two small girls that love to play outside. They're not able to come play outside because he don't understand the language or the other antics that goes on. I myself have two young boys. I don't like for them to hear. They can't sit on the porch at night anymore because you can hear like it's in the front yard. And we just, we just want to apply negative about it, if by all means necessary. And I spoke to all the neighbors surrounding me, except Mr. Taylor, I figured I spoke to you this evening, and everybody's on the same page. All of us want the same thing, we want a peaceful outcome. We just want it stopped, and we're just asking the city of Nelson, whoever, to help us. And that's, that's good.
Did you want to mention the dog?
Oh, also, there was a pit bull incident again in the summer that attacked one of the other neighbors, the Littles. A youngest son bit him. They told him that they were going to get rid of the dog. They put the dog up for a couple of months and then let the dog back out. I seen it this evening. So it's there. It has happened, and it's, you know, it's growled at other people and other, you know, other things. So that's another issue that we have with these people that, you know, they put it along with different things to die down, and then they let it out back out.
And I'll go ahead and speak, letting council and everybody here know that we, I have spoken with Cherokee County about a IGA with the Marshals Office. So we're going to have an executive session this evening. I'll hold council level, what I have, get their opinions on how to proceed, and then we'll go from there. But we will, we do this for you.
Thank you.
And we're getting things in place to be able to do the things that we need here. We don't, we've had great coverage from, like I told you, from Respeck County. We don't have a lot of trouble here in Nelson, and I don't want people to, you know, cause that not to be the case anymore because we want people happy.
Yes, ma'am. I know that they've actually told people that they're going to amp up their antics because they're upset that people are complaining, and, you know, they've made their heads right at night or Saturday night. They've stood in the driveway, shooting birds, yelling, "Help y'all, if everybody here..."
I understand.
There is no room for all that. I've never even spoken. I don't know their names. I don't know where they're from, nothing. But I know that we appreciate that.
And then I tell them, "Call you." You've been so long.
I mean, we appreciate you coming out, expressing your concern, and we will do what we can from inside here.
Thank you. That's all I can ask. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
What do you need to go now?
You, whatever you want to do, you could say it. If we won't, we won't hold it against you if you want to go. It's just a business meeting. So if you guys want to get back home, I completely understand. But thank you for, thank you for stepping in.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Plus, I wanted to welcome you back. I got the card. Thank you so much. I've been out myself, so. Next up is going to be approval of minutes, September the ninth, twenty twenty-four, council meeting. If I could get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
William Taylor?
Say it.
Nathan Handy? All in favor? unanimous. Thank you. Next up is going to be department reports and...
Do we have anything from Brooke?
No. No? Okay. All right. As soon as we get something from her, I'll get it emailed, we'll get it emailed out to you guys, okay?
She did her local city reports and work. Jesus told you her.
Just ask her if you don't want to ask her for it, just email her and ask for that update. I don't think there's going to be much.
Yeah.
Next up is mayor's report. I'd like to report that we missed our movie in the park again due to rain and weather and hurricanes and all the things. So we'd like to get that back on track. It's cooler, maybe a lot more people come out, and still going to show the minions, we paid for it. What do you guys think about the weekend after Thanksgiving?
Yeah, it's chilly.
Yeah, November the first.
No, see, after, say after Thanksgiving.
I mean, not Thanksgiving, after Halloween. How about November the first? I told you. So I'm going to go ahead and apologize now. I had COVID, I have long COVID, and it has affected, I knew something was wrong, but I know a real diagnosis, that it has affected my memory. My short-term memory is gone, the middle memory, but just bear with me. I'm hoping that this passes. So November the first, is that Saturday?
Second is Saturday, right?
November the first, I hear.
Second.
The second is, oh, that's three weeks. Oh, you're the second.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. Let's go back to the twenty-fourth. Okay, so the second is Saturday. What do you think about Saturday?
Go for it.
Okay. So November second, movie in the park. You guys be sure to bring your kids out because we're showing the minions. We usually do free popcorn. There's going to be a reading with myself. I've joined GMA for a literacy program that they have, read to the kids, and we've got bags for everybody, all the kids, so just bring out your kids for it. It'll be a lot of fun, and it's usually at dusk, so if you come a little bit early, I'm going to try to read about thirty minutes before dusk. Okay?
The ice cream truck that we had at the, we usually have the ice cream truck. I think we can still do it with the, you mean with chili, right?
I think we can too.
Ice cream is going to be...
Can we have hot chocolate?
I'll ask her.
So, yes. The other thing I wanted to bring up, I know it's a little bit early, I wanted to talk a little bit about our Christmas program and go ahead and get that on the books for this year and see what kind of date. I'd like to do it early because we always do it in the middle. If I do it the second week, it's going to rain or snow. So if we do it the first weekend, maybe, which we don't normally do, normally we do it around the second weekend, but if we do it that first weekend, which is the Saturday the seventh, if you guys are game for that, then we could plan to do December the seventh for that one. Next up is, they did a, they did a magazine article with the Cherokee County mayors. I did mention you guys, and we talked, they asked about my favorite Christmas memory, and I told them that, you know, explaining my thing as a kid, but I told mainly the council and myself, opening up the doors for the kids here in our community and, you know, treating them to treats and visit with Pam and stuff was really high on my list. I really enjoyed doing that, so you'll all be mentioned in a, in an article. So we got Christmas, we got movie in the park, and I'll go ahead and mention that we, our project for Hillside and Cherokee will be going out to bid on the eighteenth of this month, which is Friday.
I think I have a copy of the term on in the, in the project updates, just so that I have.
Yeah, I've been, I have been holding meetings and working like crazy, myself and Lord, to try to get this thing off the ground. So with that said, I'll ask you, have you heard anything about the easement for the Jones property?
There's a mediation later this week. Try to work out a probate case we can afford.
Okay, good deal. And then the other thing is, today Barry was out at the site, and they dug down for the detention pond and hit rock about eight feet down. So he's going, he's working and seeing what we can possibly do there. If it's going to be blasting, which is expensive, we may have to open up the drainage behind the property, and then you do a phase two, which will take it and open the Ingram property up and underneath the railroad tracks. Then we would have to put this property back on the market. So I'll know more about that on Wednesday when I meet with Lori and Barry, and then we may have an amendment to, to everything, depending on the outcome of that property and what kind of material is undergrounded. Okay? I'll keep you posted all the way, and I tell you that because the amendment would be, it could possibly mean a change order. In other words, we won't do a detention pond. Well, it would be less on that end, but it would be a phase two going forward for the railroad track site. And they can't be done together because of Army Corps of Engineers has to, you know, they have to engage with them for the Ingram property because it's named Stormwater Creek, and also we have to coordinate them with the, with the railroad. So doable, but at least we can spend our, we can have our dollars earmarked for, that we need earmarked for twenty twenty-five. Still keeps us, you know, where we need to be with that. Any questions on that, Miranda, and then you were good with timeline? So if the bid goes out on the eighteenth, we would open sealed bids on the fifteenth of February.
Yeah, it's on, it's pending, it's here.
Okay. All right, so property update, property acquisition update, just real quick, working on it. Yeah, and you'll be able to see it, but we're, I don't want to give too much away, but we are working, we're working through some things on that with the council. So progress is being made. Any questions on anything that we have open for anybody, for me?
William?
Nathan? Percy? Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to our finance report with Miranda.
All right, so we'll go over our bank balances first. General fund, we're at one million seventy thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. SLOSS four, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars. SLOSS five, one million eighty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. Cash reserve fund is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-nine. SLOSS twenty twenty is one million eighty thousand five hundred and ninety-one. The cares grant is a hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-six, and the SLOSS six is forty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-seven. We are currently at nine percent revenue remaining. We should be at seventy-four point nine seven or less, so we are doing good there. And overall budget is at eighty-one point two nine percent, and we should be at seventy-four point eight, point nine seven or more. So we're at six point three two percent or two good.
Have you seen insurance grant in tax? That should be any...
Yeah, I should be able to see that. We've got an application, so it's on the table too.
Yeah, I was wondering.
I think it's the fifteenth, for some reason, I'm still at it.
Okay. Perfect. Other than that, I don't remember having anything else. Thank you, Miranda.
You're welcome.
All right. Next up is unfinished business, infrastructure, drainage project update. I already gave that. Any questions on that?
There's a copy of the plan.
There's a copy in there. That's the biomass plan, as I said, and then this morning found the law, and I'll keep you guys updated via our chat channel. Next up is sanitation and maintenance property. We've got a proposal from that disengineering that I would love for you to review and approve if we end up having to go that route. Jeff Morton has also spoken about the possibility of just the county incurring those expenses, so I'm waiting to hear back from him now. Buddy, if you could review and approve the disengineering quote for the soil survey proposal, I would appreciate it that way. It doesn't hold up should the county choose to do separate, they need more than you, is what I'm saying, so for their fire departments.
He's in price of eight thousand, but two of the items, actually seven thousand dollars, and it's, it says it's required land, so it could just be a thousand.
Yeah, I'm asking that you approve the eight thousand, and he doesn't think it's going to take the eight. If you look at the, let me slide it up here.
Let's page through, page through.
I'm trying to explain it a little bit better when I find it right here. So what he told me is the level three soil survey is a must. If they hit rock, they may have to go to a level four survey, and then there's a set that designed, if required, from the county. And that's if, if the county will let us piggyback with them on the set that design, then we won't have to do that. And Jeff Morton indicated that we could, so. But in case, I'm asking for the eight thousand, in case the county bails, this property isn't good for them for what their intended use is, we still need ours. So I guess this would be called a standalone for the city of Nelson, should we have to go it on our own and the county does not decide to do it for whatever reason.
We were still talking about which piece line to get. I didn't know what to make a decision on.
Well, so there was two pieces of land, and one is, one is smaller than the other one. There's a ten acre plot. The county needs at least five to seven. I'm hoping they only need five and that we could have five. There is, when I had Barry go out and check it, he checked the topographical surveys and stuff. There is a slant to it, but it's nothing that's going to hinder the city from putting the amendments on there with the things that we need, which would be the place to house our sanitation trucks and to wash them.
It has to ride on the side going out.
It is. It's on the universal stair side.
It's right in the hallway, or something?
Yeah, it's a ten acre tract. The county would have the, the top, the top five acres, the city would have the bottom, the back five acres.
There's a map thing in the county, so.
And then the county, of course, they would have the, there's a whole lot to that, I think. They'll come up with their design and show the easement, and they'll put the road in because they have to have an access point specifically for the trucks and then an access point for cars and vehicles, and the city would use that road going back to our property. I know it.
Remind me what our...
And this is only as long as they deal with this sort of property.
Remind me what our numbers are for needing multiple, not bids, but quotes.
We have a contract in favor for engineer services.
Yeah, we have a contract with Barry.
We have set an amount that we have to have more than one price before we can approve sitting here too, don't we?
I don't know that, that's going to be a job question, because I know with Barry previously, because we had it, he gives us a set rate, like I will be writing everything and sign a contract for.
That's based on y'all's policies. There's no state law about that. I don't recall, I don't recall your internal, internal ceilings on...
I think we went with the state limit for sealed bids, which was a hundred thousand, which is around.
Correct, for sealed bids that we have.
And I think the quotes, if it's...
What is it, nine or one? Or... We should give it ten thousand?
Or...
Approval limit?
I think ours is three or five, no? And then the department's one, a one point three.
Yeah, a thousand wouldn't be a problem. The eight, I think, goes over.
I don't, can't remember the number. What's your policy?
We've just changed everything. Yeah, so we just changed everything for sealed bids, it went to a hundred, follows the state's policy.
Does it say that...
There's plenty to get.
Does it say that if you have a contract with somebody, they don't have to do the bid process?
That's a big question. I don't, I know that when we, I know that when we did the contract, and it was like thirty thousand dollars for the, for that, we approved it.
I think up to ten thousand wasn't supposed to be, as long as you have three quotes. You have to, you have your free limit up to three, and then up to ten was the three quotes, or is it more than that? Because there's supposed to be that...
I can't remember where we said when we started getting the three.
She'll pull, she'll pull and move, figure it out. Has it been changed?
I can't remember if it was ten, because we said the emergency.
Yeah, and that was the emergency part that changed.
Do you want to talk about different contracts?
Right, right.
I thought y'all talked about doing a policy with contractors.
Preferred contractors, yeah.
If you have that, or that's just been discussed?
Do we have a proof of...
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a pretty, it was, we, and we, I think there was some paperwork that had to go out if they...
The project, they don't have support from us in their own contract.
Okay, there you go.
What about my...
The project for this was just people that are already set up in the system, all they have to submit everything, we're ready to go if they get an out. It's changed so many times over the years, I can't...
Where you did it?
Yes. That's right. We're not leaving the record that I know.
Because the danger was a thousand, it didn't go up to thirty thousand.
Yeah.
And then I think it...
The sealed bid was a problem.
The sealed bid is a hundred thousand.
Quotes between whatever and a hundred.
Ten or twenty-five, I just, I don't remember very, very good.
I can't remember if it's three, the dollar of what may or not be what it is or if it's...
I don't think it was that.
I don't either.
And if it had been...
It used to be ten thousand.
I think it was ten, that's what I think it might have been. But it was still a bit of a ten.
Yeah, I remember they left that at ten and then raised the sealed bid.
We can't know what the policy says. Usually, though, it's your contractor, the engineer, the engineers are kind of like, you're almost like you're a terming.
It's y'all's call, it's y'all's policy. You can, you can do with it as you want, if you trust this contractor because it's somebody to deal with all the time, you can choose not to follow your general policy, just totally up to you.
Okay, so it's saying in our limit, daily limit was increased to three thousand. Should a cost or estimate, the possibility of the service is being processed in accordance of paragraph C above, more than three thousand, the city manager, mayor shall ensure that three quotes. So anything above our...
Okay.
You could, I mean, I guess you have the option of proving the three thousand, and hopefully you don't make it or four, is that right?
We only need the three thousand.
Yeah.
Thousand's what we need.
So if you need to move forward faster, you could say we're going to move it up to three. What was this?
Well, that would work if you do the one, you can move up to three if that happens.
If it's four, totally possible.
So if you prove one, I could prove up to, I could approve up to three, that would get us up to four.
Because three, we don't know if we need it or not. We won't know if we need the three.
Until you get it.
Until the one.
Tell me when it's done.
Yeah. Okay, so let me rephrase that. So can I get an approval for the level three soil survey of one thousand dollars? And if, and if the level four is required, I would like, I would like for you guys to tell me, approve, because we're team, that we're all on the same page with me approving the three thousand.
If we need it.
Okay. So can I get a motion to approve the one thousand and for me to do the three thousand if needed?
Let's make a motion through the one thousand.
Okay.
And then I'm all right with the three thousand if it is required.
Okay, wait, can I get a second? Is it in a poll favor? Okay. I appreciate that, I'll hope this moves forward quicker. All right. Next up is furniture for the city hall. Darren did a great job on Nelson's office, thanks to my desk. We asked for the quotes for storage, and we'll see it back here, get back here. All this, the furniture can be taken with us when we build a city hall, wouldn't be left behind, but it's good solid wood furniture, adding fraction of the cost you're going to get from anywhere else we've looked and priced.
The comparisons to all the same, I said, what kind of everything, I came with you on.
So the desk for Ms. Pan's office, an L-shaped desk is thirteen fifty, and then there's a wall unit for the back of it, which is eighteen hundred and two, and then we have what he's calling a catalog cabinet, which is...
It's like a fresh shelf that's for storage or just for storage.
So that, we need a workspace for where we put our, where we put all of our stuff together, our, our binders and all the things like that. We had talked about picking up something from Home Depot, like a, it's like a workstation, but they're a thousand dollars, like twelve hundred dollars, and it's really not what we need. It won't fit the paper or anything like that. It was like fifteen, it was more than twelve thousand, no, twelve hundred.
It's either fifteen or eighteen, and they had had one sale, like a thousand, it was sold out.
Yeah, it was white, they had to, the thing is, it would not hold the paper and stuff, so the city hasn't, we have no storage here. So the workspace for, in the, in the area where the printer is at, and then in the hallway across from the records room is cabinet storage, where we can store our binders, our paper, our, all the things that we have in there that we really need to use that space for, for our chairs and our tent and our movie equipment and things like that. Right now, we've got things stacked on top of each other in our records room. So the total quote is twelve thousand two hundred and four dollars, this is all you get for that. It's all solid wood and it...
And it also had doors in the cabinet.
Oh, and it's going to also add doors to that cabinet where we've got those blue curtains, so it'll dress that up a little bit. And it's, like I said, it's all solid wood, so. Like open up discussion about it, talk about it, Percy, you go first.
We can't buy it.
One of the wall units, I've been looking twenty thousand just for one year.
Just because, I mean...
We're laying on spreader really shanks.
We can't find solid wood.
No, you can't even find solid wood.
Even the little cases we looked at, it like, we looked online, so...
There was stuff on Target, and they were like, that's a solid wood.
Yeah, online, so.
And here it is. What can we have?
So this is, naked questions?
I'm just trying to picture what that is for fifty-six hundred.
It's basically like a wall unit, which is built in three sections, so it can be...
So if you want to picture, it's in front of the record room, you know, that wall there? So picture this wall, and it's, it's basically, you will have... So picture this wall and it's, it's basically, you will have cabinets that are gonna be about this high. And they'll be able, you could put workspace there as well. And then above it is another set of cabinets. It all has doors to be able to put stuff in. And there's three of those, side by side, that could be detached and put into the new city hall. So.
They're movable.
They're movable. Yeah, they're not, they're not building. They're movable cabinets is what they are. They're solid wood and they will go along with housing all the stuff that we have right now, that we have been, we really just stacked stuff stacked everywhere.
Nine feet long.
I think so. It's a hundred and eight. Yeah.
The math isn't working.
Mine is all good. I know, we measured it.
All three, three feet units.
Yeah, three.
Three foot sections, so they can be moved.
Is that right?
Yeah, it should be nine because it's a hundred and eight, twelve, nine times twelve, forty.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. So it's three, thirty-six inches piece, top and bottom. And then Pam's desk is just like mine, Kelsey's. It's just a solid wood desk, um, surface with a unit behind it. And it'll all match, that's the other thing. So all our furniture will, would, and I like that idea, would all match and look nice as well. And it would be solid wood. So it's gonna last the city for a long time. Kelsey's desk, when did we go to that? Five years ago.
I don't know, it was here, there was.
Drive you over.
Fifteen or eighteen hundred. I don't think it would last initially, very much. What's the cost, babe?
So I remember looking at the prices on the other stuff, will you, price the desks and all.
I can remember that. I still have it in the, the council binder thing.
It'd be nice to see it again. I mean, again, this is twelve thousand dollars as opposed to eight. Let's just see if he's on July six now.
On what?
July six.
March.
March.
Yeah, I'll have a conversation with everybody about that too, um, just to. James has got three more treatments, so, um. Yeah, I think you're allowed three. Um, and you can, what is the, what is the rule on that? For, for him, he's missing meetings because he has cancer. I mean, it should be, we didn't have a former.
I have to look and see if we have that in the ordinance.
It, it, it just says that you can miss up to three meetings and he could call into two, so we, and we told him that. So I know that he has planned on calling into a couple of meetings, um, to get him through the, this hump, so. Well, he will. We'll try to do that. I mean, anyways, get her up time, get her up week, so.
It's a pretty strict requirement. To be in ordinance that way.
Three of them, I think it's three in a row, not just missing. It's been a while since.
But you can't, I mean, I don't think it's termite though.
That's why I'm curious to see what it says.
Yeah. It was suspended, but it was suspended, but I don't think it's termite because they were, they buried it in, so.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Yeah, we can check on that.
I think that'd be like a doctor's excuse for his medical emergency.
Yeah. I mean, I want to do it right. I just want him on the track, he's getting better and getting more. Yeah, we can talk to him. Just tell him to plug in.
Yeah, he doesn't even.
Give a speech.
No, he just.
If he gets two on the phone.
He is getting his packages, so he, yeah, and asking questions, so he does have that. And then we have, um, we did not have time to get all the ballot for November because that was done in August, I believe. So we did check, but in March, we're gonna, we're planning, there's another election ticket in March, so we plan on piggybacking on that. So if everybody's good with it, you know.
I was thinking the regular one. It's last November.
Yeah. I mean, we wanted to do it the right way, but we also want to make sure that we're, you know, and we have a forum, so that's good. And we, if we have a situation where we have somebody, we just have to, you know, be in contact. If we have an issue where somebody wanted to agree but can't make it, we post a meeting and we move it to where it's agreed, can't be here.
Kind of, but see, this is in fact ninety-four inches, so this seems.
Bigger.
Yeah, but is it one piece like this or is it separate? So you can work down here.
You work down there and then these are all cabinets, are doors.
Doors up top.
And bottom.
So there's a bottom and then almost like a shelf, so you can put your stuff together.
We didn't see one like it was, but it would be, down here is a little bit taller and it would be, um, more like.
But you also have the shipping closet, which would be.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's true.
That'd be the best thing you could use in those blockwork stations.
Oh, like this, I don't.
No, that's, that's, that's the one like, the one in, in Kelsey's office there, that's the, this one here.
Yeah, but at least someone puts in a hall, you have all sorts of.
Yeah, you have all sorts of. And I mean, since we have a lot of stuff, like we have binders, we have, we have paper, we have.
We need some doors.
We didn't find anything like that, that was.
Yeah, I have a name of actual wood. It could be.
And the good thing about it is, like you said, it's solid wood. It'll, it'll last the city long after we're not here. So it'd be repainted if necessary, but right now, it'll, it would be white with the, with the wood-based finish top, just like what we currently have. So.
What phones are we gonna use for that?
Small.
We'll use a break. We need that and we'll just try to make sure that gets it all.
Yeah, you can use the. Probably look at this.
Actually, just get.
Get some momentum. Yeah, they, and I will say this, when we met with, um, when we met with the county, they were saying, oh, furniture is, you're looking at, you're looking at five hundred thousand dollars. They said, well, furniture is, yeah, so I really feel like if we're, if we're using, we have solid wood furniture that is, that's this kind of quality and that is quality furniture. If this is a fraction of.
Yeah, there's no doubt it works better than.
Yeah, so.
But it's also the fact that it's wood, it's not gonna be against the park, like, or, so it's not gonna swell and problems with it later.
Yeah. And he said that, you know, he'll do maintenance if there's any issues with it. He'll actually come help remove it and get it to its new home and tidy it up, so we'll get that far, so. Any questions about it before we bring that to a vote? Can I get a motion to approve, um, the quote for furniture for the city hall, twelve thousand, two hundred and four dollars? Can I get a motion to approve? Can I get a second?
I'll say.
Liam Tanner, on favor. Thank you. All right, next step is our IGA for the Cherokee County for the Drainage Improvement Project on Hillside in Cherokee. This is just a formality. They're able to do the process for us. They're giving us Lori to, as a L R P M. She has the qualifications to submit all the paperwork and stuff for that SLOSS project, like she did for the one in Saliva News. And the difference is, is that she's free to us, so at no charge. Can I get a motion to approve the IGA for, um, Cherokee County for our phase two storm drain project, um, with the county? William Taylor, I'm gonna get a second. Nathan, on favor? Yeah. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and sign this, see if I can keep track of that. And then I would like to adjourn to executive session, just for about five minutes to discuss our issue.
And like a motion to adjourn to the section, the discussion.
A second? Chris, can you go? All the favor? Yeah, it's okay.